I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, September 26, 2022, and it is 7:00. Please rise for the pledge.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishiba, whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give our thanks to the generous care with which the Anishiba and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk, can you please take the roll?
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Here.
Commissioner Ronan is absent. Commissioner Bush is absent. Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum. So the first thing we're going to do is a presentation on the Mount Pleasant City landfill study done by David Alder from Manic Smith. Is it Manic Smith Group? Thank you.
My name's Dave Adler. I'm with Manic and Smith. We've been working for the city since late 2020 on the regulatory compliance for the old city landfill that's at the end of North Franklin Street. Feel free to ask questions if you have any. The landfill is at the north end of, at the dead end of North Franklin Street where the wastewater treatment plant and the city's street department and maintenance garage are at. So the landfill is in this mounded area right here. This is the wastewater treatment plant and the maintenance garage, the salt vehicle, storage, and these are, I think, old offices that are just used as storage now. The Chippewa River is right here. The Mount Pleasant Country Club Golf Course is here. The river actually flows through the golf course eastward, eventually ends up in the Titibowasi River, which ends up in the Saginaw River and into Saginaw Bay. So a little history. The city ran the landfill from the '50s to about the mid-'70s. It was actually licensed, at least for one year, according to the records that we looked at, under Old Act 87, which is many years ago. The new regulations are quite a bit different, quite a bit more stringent. In 2018, there were pipes discovered that were discharging from the landfill area into the river. The discharge was sampled and analyzed. It contained elevated metals and PFOS. PFOS is these emerging contaminants that are really the latest concern these days in Michigan for drinking water and groundwater and surface water. And they're per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances, and they're derived largely from things like Teflon and Scotchgard and firefighting foam. They also were used in paint, food wrappers, anything Gore-Tex, Scotchgard, Teflon, these sorts of things. A lot of sources of PFOS, and they're quite ubiquitous in the environment. The city has been working with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, formerly the Department of Environmental Quality, and other stakeholders to bring the site into compliance with the regulations, namely Part 201 of Michigan Public Act 451, the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. They've stopped the discharge. The pipes were cut and capped. Monitoring wells were installed in 2019 and sampled, and some additional wells were installed in 2020 and sampled. We got involved in November 2020. The shallow groundwater samples that we've collected and that have been collected out at the site have contained some elevated levels of PFOS and certain metals, aluminum, arsenic, and boron were the ones that come to mind. In November 2020, we conducted Groundwater Testing Project Number Three for the city. It had a set scope of work that we followed, and the shallow groundwater near the river was found to have elevated levels of PFOS, arsenic, and boron. We conducted a follow-up investigation as required by the state in 2021 and in 2022 that we just finished, and we developed what's called a site-specific conceptual site model, and we also addressed the deeper groundwater conditions underneath the landfill to address the state's concern that there could be deeper aquifers that might be supplying local water supply wells beyond the city's water supply system and beyond Union Township's water supply system. The landfill was originally constructed under the old regulations without a clay cap, without any side slope liners or bottom liner. Today, you wouldn't be able to construct a licensed landfill like that, but back when this landfill was first constructed, the regulations were much less stringent. There's no leachate management system. Leachate is water that's percolated through the buried refuse and could become contaminated and reach the groundwater. There's no landfill gas control mechanisms. However, a two-foot-thick compacted clay cap was added later as a retrofit. I think it was in the 1970s as part of work at the wastewater treatment plant, and we actually sampled and tested that clay cap, and it meets modern standards. So the clay cap helps keep more rainwater, snowwater, runoff water from infiltrating into the landfill. The site hydrogeology, there's sand and gravel from the ground surface to anywhere from 10 to 25 feet, depending on whether you're up on the high ground or down on the low ground by the Chippewa River. There's glacial till underlying the sand and gravel to at least 50 feet. The glacial till is a clay-like material. It's very cohesive, and it's a very good barrier to vertical migration of groundwater and leachate. The shallow groundwater in the glacial sand and gravel flows towards the Chippewa River, something that was suspected all along but hadn't been really confirmed until we did our work. And this is a pretty key point right here. There were no deeper aquifers encountered down to depths of 50 feet, including directly beneath the landfill where we did some drilling and found the lacustrine till clay, the glacial till clay, right underneath the buried refuse. So this is the regional geology. The site is right here on the north end of town, and this orange area is a big area of lacustrine, glacial lacustrine, sand and gravel from a glacial lake bed. This is a cross-section of some of the area where we worked. The refuse looks something like this. It's a dashed line because we don't know exactly how it was configured. This is the lacustrine sand and gravel that the shallow groundwater occurs in, and this is the underlying glacial till that's very impermeable. And down to elevations, and the Chippewa River is right here, so down to elevations, a good 30 feet or so below the river, we found all glacial till and no underlying aquifers. That's good news for the city. But as you can see, there's no, a side slope liner would have been in this area, so there's nothing to prevent leachate going through the landfill refuse from migrating outward. And there's nothing to prevent landfill gas from migrating either. This is the shallow groundwater bearing, silty, fine sand that we found in the upper 25 feet. And this is some of the lacustrine gravelly sand or sandy gravel that we found right under that that also has groundwater in it. This is the underlying glacial till. It's a clay material. Some of it's cemented, like what they call hardpan, and this is very impermeable material. This is a groundwater flow direction map for the shallow groundwater. These blue lines are the groundwater flow path, and as you can see, there's one here also. The shallow groundwater that's in the upper 25 feet is flowing towards the river, which confirms what we had found previously. This shows the results of some of the groundwater samples that we collected from some of the monitoring wells at the site, and here's the approximate outline of the landfill, this yellow line here. The real concern is these orange-colored boxes where these PFOS compounds, PFOS in this case, exceed what's called the groundwater-surface-water interface cleanup criteria. And we'll touch base on that in a minute. Most of them are in the wells that are right along the river, down gradient of the landfill, on the west side of the landfill. There is one here, which is by this wet area. You can call it a wetland. I don't know that a wetland survey's been done. It probably would qualify as a wetland if that was the case, but we haven't done a wetland survey here, so I'm hesitant to call it an official wetland. Basically, the groundwater-surface-water interface is shallow groundwater that ends up in the river, in the surface water, in this case, the Chippewa River. And this is a fairly common situation, and this is what seems to be happening at the site, which is pretty much what we and the state expected, but it hadn't really been proven yet until we did our work last year and this year. So the state has standards for what kind of contaminants can be in groundwater at what levels that ends up in surface water, and that's called the GSI, the Groundwater-Surface-Water Interface Criteria. And the standards that we're using right now are the generic standards under Part 201 of Public Act 451, generic meaning they apply at any site in the state. You do have the option of developing your own site-specific cleanup criteria. We haven't done that yet. So the GSI is the primary contaminant migration pathway. The glacial till that underlies the shallow groundwater prevents vertical migration into deeper aquifers. We didn't really see any deeper aquifers. There probably are some further down at depth that we, beyond where we drilled, but the drinking water pathway has been addressed here now, and that was one of the state's biggest concerns and one of the reasons they had us doing this. So really, it's boiling down to the groundwater-surface-water and what may be going into the river is really the biggest issue of concern at this point. As far as status, we submitted our most recent report to the city as a draft. I've spoken to Jason about it, and we're just waiting for any comments or the okay to finalize it, and we'll be doing that shortly, I believe, and submitting it to the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Ake?
Okay, thank you for this presentation. I may have to look at it again, you know, to better understand all of this. It's detailed and it's... But the question that I have is, now that you have, you know, you've provided us with this, what next? What is the next step? Because for me, you know...
Well, I think the next step is to finalize our report and submit it to the state and let them review it and comment on it. And typically, what's been happening after that, after we submit a report, is we'll meet with them to talk about it. The state has the authority to regulate and the authority to enforce the regulations.
Okay.
The regulations, though, aren't terribly straightforward, and the way the state's policy is formulated isn't necessarily consistent across the board and across the state, and we're dealing with, these PFOS compounds are relatively new to everybody. And so my advice to the city would be just to submit the report like we've been doing, let the state review it, and then we'll talk to them and see where we're headed.
Okay, all right. Well, I suppose, you know, we just have to wait for the state because this is, you know, these forever chemicals or whatever they call them.
PFOS, yes. Forever chemicals, you're right.
Yeah, forever chemicals, yeah. You know, they are troubling, and we want to make sure that drinking water is safe and that our environment is safe. So if you're telling us that, you know, the next step is to go wait for the state to then give us its response and follow-up direction, I guess that's what we're gonna have to do.
Now, based on what we've done so far, we feel very strongly that drinking, that there is no threat to drinking water or deeper aquifers. I think the state will agree on that, but they haven't seen it yet, so I can't say. They wanted us to try and demonstrate, you know, what was going on with the deeper groundwater that could be affecting somebody's drinking water supply. The city has a copy of my presentation.
Okay.
And I can leave you my business. Jason has, the DPW director, has my contact information if you want to get hold of me.
Okay. And how frequently does the state quote-unquote mandate testing or does it not? How often?
At this moment, we don't have any set schedule for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
This is just based on what a friend has told me or asked me. Is there a real strict line between where the dump is and where the Country Club Golf Course is, or is perhaps some of the Country Club over some of the old dump?
I don't think so. No, no. From everything we've seen, the buried refuse is on the city's property and doesn't extend onto the Country Club property, which is higher up, by the way, and they're separated by a wet area, a low-lying wet area.
Thank you.
One thing I might add, we're dealing here with these PFOS in parts per trillion. These are really low numbers, and so it's new stuff. Parts per trillion isn't much. It doesn't take much to find parts per trillion. It's really, really low concentrations. But with PFOS, the state's cleanup criteria, the drinking water standards are also very low.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Asman?
This gentleman in the back here had his hand up. I don't know if he has a further question.
Yeah, so, in regard, I'd say, President, you had mentioned that a lot of your work had been to bring the site into compliance with state standards. I think that was just like at the start of the presentation. Is it currently within state standard or is it still being compliant?
Well...
Could you define that or comment on that?
Some of the exceedances, I guess you could say, are beyond, above the state's cleanup criteria. So in that sense, it's not in compliance. But even before we got involved, the city has been working proactively with the state to be in compliance, so we're heading that direction. And it's been friendly and amicable and constructive the whole way and cooperative.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a presentation from the building official, Brian Kench, on sustainable, sustainability efforts.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come in tonight and speak a little bit about our building sustainability efforts. My name is Brian Kench. I'm the building official with the city, but I also wear a couple of hats, different hats here, dealing with some of our facility management and such. Early 2020, we sat down with the Consumer Energy staff and talked about some of their rebate programs and such and some of our goals at the time. That was just ahead of the pandemic, and of course, at that point, things started moving a little bit slower than we would like. One of the things they introduced us to was their, what they referred to as their building tune-up and retrocommissioning program, had a number of eligible projects in there, all geared towards energy efficiency, but predominantly what we were looking for is to have our buildings actually benchmark against similar buildings under this program. And those projects typically fell in line with things that fall into the HVAC, the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning type categories. First thing we ran into, though, is our building automation system. While this building is fairly young, at 2007, a lot of the technology, as you know, when you're buying a computer, after about the first year, you need to start looking at updates, and some of those things happened at City Hall. We were unable to do any type of trend data, which was required from Consumers Energy to be able to do an adequate audit, and of course, at about this time, our public safety building had a ransomware attack and was unable to even access their system. If you recall, city commission at the time approved an amendment to our budget so we could make those updates, and since then, folks from Consumers, we've been working very closely with them, were able to complete our audit. Again, they benchmarked our buildings, compared those with others. Yes, we have some work to do, and we've been working on those things right along. Talked about, well, I'll give you an example. I put occupancy sensors up for the HVAC. The big thing that they look at is low-cost, no-cost solutions for some of our energy efficiency, and one of the things they gravitated towards was our scheduling. This building, rather than falling into an exact schedule, we used occupancy sensors. So you'll see those in the room here. Sometimes you may walk in, it may feel a little bit cooler, the building will catch up once somebody walks through it. That's one of the things that we did. We took a little bit more aggressive stance on our scheduling throughout the building to identify areas that are used less frequently and dial those schedules back and then get them a little closer to the actual timeframe when people are in the buildings. This is a snapshot of the report that they've given us early on. I will say they're diligent about following up the engineering staff that works with the Consumers Energy or from Nexant, and even through the pandemic, they were touching base with us about every other month to see how we were coming on some of the solutions here. Some of the things were pretty straightforward in the scheduling, but others, they had to go fairly deep into the controls and then the analysis of the systems themselves. We're still struggling with some of our controllers not being able to communicate correctly with our software, so you'll probably see some requests at some point here for some, as part of our capital planning process, updating some of the controllers and such. I can get this document to you, but it is very detailed, and a lot of it's dealing with adjustments in some of the set points in the equipments themselves, and there again, a lot of things with scheduling. I refer to our capital planning process, and so a lot of the things that are coming out of this review lend themselves to making further recommendations, educated decisions in making recommendations for roof repairs, updates to our HVAC and those types of things. This is an illustration here of roof repairs. As we look at trying to conserve energy, one of the things we do now is infrared scanning, which allows us to tell where leaks are in the roof. It allows us to tell where we may have failing insulation that needs to be removed as part of the project. We'll do the same thing with a lot of our boilers and things like that, looking there again for things that are the most energy efficient, work in with our current systems and be compatible with our software. And then lastly, Consumers Energy Demand Response Program. This is something Jason was able to get us involved in, and this allows us to work with Consumers Energy. The program runs from June 1st to September 30th. We had to test our generator in this case. That's one option for working through the demand response program, but this allows us to take advantage of the program to get a reduction in our utility rates if we're able to use our generator in those peak hours. One of the biggest demands on the system or the grid itself is cooling for homes and businesses, and so you can see here, program runs from June 1st to September 30th. An event can be anywhere from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and we've agreed up to five events per cycle, and they typically give us a notice 30 minutes to 12 hours ahead of the event. And then you can see the rates reductions, so that's one of the ways that we're choosing to kind of reduce our operating costs, those types of things. There's many other ways under the demand program, which allows us to shut down lighting, shut down motors, those types of things. We have a pretty robust generator at all of our sites, and we opted to do this, so. Future goals, we're looking at some lighting out in the parking lot. We've converted virtually everything to LED at this point. When we did this building, we had some fairly high-efficient fluorescent lights, and so we waited to the point that they would qualify for the update, and I think we did 600, 700 lights in the city hall. DPS has went updated a couple of years ago, and so we're slowly seeing our electrical bills drop, so that's kind of where we're at. And of course, we'll explore solar and some of those other energy options as we start moving forward, so that's what I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Vice Mayor Alsager?
I just had one question.
Sure.
On the last slide, you mentioned 30 minutes to whatever, you know, for warning for an event, and by event, do you mean discontinuing air conditioning for a period of time or something like that?
No, we actually, we actually shut down primary power, allow our generator to come on, and they will give us notice when we can take that back out of service.
Oh, I see.
So, but there again, there's a couple of different ways we can do it. We had the luxury of having a fairly robust generator to be able to do that, so, okay?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate this. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Can we entertain a motion to... Can we entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I move.
Right? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. The agenda is approved as it stands. At this time, I will open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak at this time, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you are joining us by Zoom, you will, you can use your raised hand feature or star nine to let the person that's running the Zoom know that you would like to be part of this time. When you're brought into the Zoom area, you will be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come to the podium at this time? Come forward.
My name is Lee Robertson, and I've prepared a set of remarks.
Lee, can you state your address?
Oh, yep, sorry. My home address is 1205 Harold Street. At least, I'm living as a student. So I'd like to start off by saying hello to the Mount Pleasant friends and neighbors. I was selected to be the Mount Pleasant City Commission Liaison for the Central Michigan University Student Government Association. This is a newly created cabinet position that is being implemented for the first time this school year. I will be in this position until I graduate in May of 2023. To break the ice a bit, let me tell you a little bit about myself and my goals. I am an integrative public relations major with a double minor in journalism and public affairs. My mother is a professor at CMU, and we have lived in and around Mount Pleasant for 16 years. Many of the commission I know outside of my official work at CMU. I had Vice Mayor Alsager for seventh grade health class. I met and became friends with Vice Mayor, former Vice Mayor, Simon, at an open-mic night at Kaia Coffee House. And I played in a rock band with Dr. Ronan's son, George Jr. Even though I wasn't born here, I love this place and will always consider it my hometown. I joined SGA because I wanted to make this place better than when I found it, both CMU and the town itself. My connection to this town runs deep, and I consider it my true home and will always consider it to be my hometown. My agenda for this year can be summed up in four words: We live here, too. That phrase illustrates how important it is that CMU students feel like they belong to the community as much as anyone else who lives here. I intend to help facilitate that. As you all know, decisions made by the commission impact everyone in Mount Pleasant, not just the town's permanent residents. That is why I feel it is imperative that students are consistently present and involved in policymaking as much as the professors and administrators at CMU are. This has not always been the case, which is why I'm setting a precedent for the students who take on my position in the years after I graduate. I hope to set a good precedent for them and also set some decent and reasonable expectations the commission may have of us in the future. This year, I'm going to get students to feel more comfortable expressing their thoughts, feelings, concerns about various issues to the City Commission. As the liaison between the Student Government Association and the commission, I will act as a mouthpiece through which my fellow students can be heard. From what I have observed in the time I've lived in the area, there hasn't been a good, consistent dialogue between Mount Pleasant community leaders and the students themselves at CMU specifically. I believe this lack of communication benefits no one, so I seek to change it. On behalf of the Student Government Association's 2022-23 Cabinet, I would like to say thank you to the Mount Pleasant City Commission for your continued support in the CMU community, and we look forward to working with you further as the year progresses. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you.
Any questions?
Are there any questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Of course, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to step forward? Boomer?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Boomer Wingard. I live at 119 East Broadway Street, Unit C, Mount Pleasant, Michigan. I'm a candidate for City Commission. I wanted to give brief remarks after the presentation on the landfill site. There is, as part of the 2% funding project from the tribe, there was a request put in for additional funding. I would just encourage that to be one of your top priorities as you are considering what projects and proposals to put forward to the tribe. Appreciate your time, and thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in Zoom that would like to speak?
We have no one joining us from Zoom.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward? Yes?
My name is Carl Hauser. I live in Clare. I currently serve as the Director of Veteran Services for Clare County, but that's actually not why I'm here. I am on the ballot in November for the Board of Trustees from Mid-Michigan College. So I just want to come down. And since Mount Pleasant is now a part of the Mid-Cashman area, to introduce myself, very quick background, why I want to do this and go from there. Actually, not used to being on a microphone. I go in front of the townships, and I'm usually loud enough. So anyway, I served 20 years in the Air Force, completed my bachelor's and master's degrees while in active duty, spent about 12 years in banking after that, and then started working for Clare County about four years ago. Went back to school, actually went to MIT and got an associate's degree in criminal justice, so I'm an alum as well. I do have some ties to Mount Pleasant, believe it or not, through the Friends of the Broadway. I've been in a couple of theater productions down the street here. But again, I just want to introduce myself. I don't know that folks running for the position get out much. It is an unpaid, part-time, nonpartisan position, so there's not a whole lot of fighting over it. But I did want to at least put a face to a name and then answer any questions. Oh, and I do believe, by the way, MIT is doing a good job, especially getting out to the community, with community involvement, continuing education, et cetera. I'm not out to change that, but I would like to try and enhance it and make it better if I can. Any questions for me?
Are there any questions?
Super.
Thank you so much. All right. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak? All right, then I will close the public input, and we will move on to the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager Dissents?
Receipt of petitions and communications this evening includes: annual report on Experimental Aircraft Association benefit to the airport, minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board from August.
All right. We're going to move on to the consent items. Are any of the, would anyone like to remove a consent item and place it on the regular agenda? All right, Manager Dissents, please go over the consent items.
Consent items this evening includes: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held September 12, 2022; approval of the minutes from the closed session held September 12, 2022; consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items.
I move.
Second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Consent items have been approved. At this time, we're going to go into our public hearing. Our public hearing is on the establishment of an industrial development district for D.L. Wilson Properties located at 1219 North Mission Street and Considered Resolution. Manager Dissents, can you please highlight this and let us know what this is about?
Absolutely. D.L. Wilson Properties is seeking the establishment of an industrial development district at their existing location, which is 1219 North Mission Street. The industrial development district will allow D.L. Wilson to seek a tax abatement on the future, on the value of future construction at their facility. D.L. Wilson plans to complete such an expansion of the facility in the future. We do have a representative from D.L. Wilson here this evening, as well as MMDC CEO Jim McBride. They could probably speak to the project.
Okay. This time, I will open the public hearing. If anyone is here that would like to speak to this, please come forward. You'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. I know that we don't have anybody on Zoom. All right, doesn't look like we have anybody that's going to come forward on this, so I'm going to ask Jim and the representative of D.L. Wilson to come forward and present to us what they'd like to have happen.
Chairman Chair, yeah, Middle Michigan strongly supports this move. Obviously, they're looking at a major expansion. The first thing that the City Commission needs to do is set up the district. I believe there were some technical issues when we first looked at this, and so that needs to be fixed with the combination of the property. But they're looking at expanding and adding jobs to our area, so this is something I would highly recommend. Nicolette is here from Wilson Steel. Nicolette, do you want to just make a few comments?
Yeah, this is a project that we've had in mind for quite a few years now. The pandemic put a little bit of a damper on it for a while, but it's not a new idea. We're just trying to lay a lot of the groundwork ahead of time. It's still something that's under heavy consideration, and this is just one of those small steps we're taking to move forward with it.
Okay. Are there any questions from the commission? So what we're doing here is we are establishing this, the district for this.
Yes.
Okay.
And yes, the commission will have to act again to grant the abatement at a later date, but without the district, they can't move forward.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions that they would like to ask the staff?
I do.
Yes?
The staff is recommending that we do this. What is the staff's reason?
I think the reason, we have some information right now. What this does is set up the district. When D.L. Wilson comes before us later in the year, they will ask for a tax abatement. And at that point, the City Commission could get further clarification as to what the exact project's going to be. We do have within your commission packet what looks like a site plan review of the proposed expansion, but certain things are unknown. They estimate number of jobs. A number of other things are unknown at this point, so really, staff's recommendation is based off of, one, an interest in furthering the conversation about their proposed expansion and what their request is going to look like. Two, I think it shows encouragement for economic development within the area as well as job creation.
That's good. I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I will entertain a motion to accept the, to establish the industrial development district.
I move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. At this time, because this is a public hearing, we need to do a roll call. Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. All right, this time, we're going to move on to new business. Consider the engineering, design, and construction engineering contracts with Williams &amp; Works for the 2023 City Hall retaining wall replacement project. Manager Dissents?
Yes. So the retaining walls here at City Hall are in need of replacement. This project was listed within the city's six-year capital improvements plan. The city received bids from engineering and construction oversight for the project, which is set to begin in 2023. The city received bids from two different firms, Williams &amp; Works as well as Beckett Raider. The city is recommending the bid from Williams &amp; Works for $76,275. It's about $12,000 over the low bidder. However, in looking at the materials supplied by the two bidders, city staff felt very strongly about working with Williams &amp; Works on this particular project. Williams &amp; Works has more experience on these type of projects, on retaining walls, large-size retaining walls like this in particular, and also really showed that within their response to the request for proposals, even discussing ways that they felt that the retaining wall has failed us and ways that they would construct and design the retaining wall in the future so that such a failure wouldn't happen again. So staff felt very comfortable in recommending their bid going forward. Again, we do know it's $12,000 above the low bid, but we felt very strongly based on their experience.
Okay. Are there any questions? The commission hands for the staff for clarity. I will entertain a motion.
I move, I guess.
And your move is for?
To, where is it? To award, this is, to award the contract?
And the budget amendment as well?
Yes, as recommended.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those, I don't know if you guys should sit down there by yourselves anymore.
Making fun of me because I don't second anything.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to Item 10, is to consider the prioritization and approval of submission of city requests for the 2% from the Sagewa-Chippewa Indian Tribe. We would, what we do is we look at what the departments have given us, and we choose the top five that we would like to see brought forward. The staff will then take those, the top five from all of us, mix them together, see which ones are the same, and try to come up with a list for the tribe. I'm going to ask from the end with Commissioner Eke to give your first five, and then Commissioner Asman.
The Mid-Michigan GKB Riverwalk Pathway is my first. The Fire Rescue Apparatus. The North Franklin Farmer Landfill Remediation and Monitoring. Pickard and Bradley Traffic Signal. I think I have five now.
Yes.
Okay, just, I have more, but five would do.
Okay.
Okay.
Who was that?
Okay, Commissioner Asman.
Did you get them? Okay.
None of them have a particular importance to me, but just five that I picked.
Yes.
Fire rescue apparatus, lime disposal, Mount Pleasant Police Department vehicle cameras, and the M20 pedestrian bridge.
Okay.
And the Mid-Michigan GKB Riverwalk Pathway Northern Connection was my.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Alsager?
Well, in a way, it was made easy this time. We had four that were considered critical in two different areas. So, you know, you can split your votes between those, but, so I've selected two that were in the critical list. But I'll start with the community services, the Mid-Michigan GKB Riverwalk Pathway. And then under public safety, the Fire Rescue Apparatus. And a second one under public safety is the Mount Pleasant Police Department vehicle cameras. That was one of the critical ones. And then under public works, the lime disposal and the Pickard Storm Sewer. And some of the ones that I didn't select, I'm wondering if we might be able to get ARPA funding for those.
That is possible. My five are the Fire Rescue Apparatus, the Mount Pleasant Police Department vehicle cameras, the lime disposal, the Pickard and Bradley Traffic Signal, and the Water Treatment Plant Roof Replacement. All right, did you get all of them? Yes, okay. Yes, okay. We'll move on to Item 11. Receive an ordinance to add a Chapter 116 to Title IX Business Regulations of the city's code entitled Electric Scooters/Skateboards, and set a public hearing... We are only setting a public hearing for October 10 on the same. Manager dissents?
So the City Commission is asked to set a public hearing for October 10 on the proposed ordinance that is within your City Commission packets. Very basic ordinance that's presented before the City Commission, and this would allow the operation of e-scooter, e-skateboard rental companies similar to a bird or to a lift to operate within the city limits. The ordinance makes requirements of the operating companies as well as the users. This includes that companies will need a license in order to operate such a business within the city limits. Such licenses will require the owner to provide contact information, proof of insurance, and information about the units that they are using. Scooters themselves or skateboards will need to operate in a safe manner, such as having kickstands, working parts, and the units that limit speed to 25 miles per hour. Operators of the units will need to comply with a list of regulations, such as keeping speeds under 10 miles an hour on city sidewalks, staying to the right of street lanes, and not using units while intoxicated. The ordinance does not allow for units to be placed or remain in areas that impede traffic, bus stops, sidewalk areas, impeding pedestrians in any way, in front of fire hydrants, or other nuisance areas. Units that are found in these areas may be impounded by the city, and the release of such units would be subject to a fee set by resolution. Companies operating within the city limits will also need to provide data information to the city. This is a way for the city to track and utilize the data and look at the use and the number of units that we have within the city as well, too.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions? Anything they would like clarity on? Commissioner Ekke?
I noticed that we got at least one email message asking us if we have considered how to enforce, you know, if we, you know, sort of enforce the regulation or... And I, you know, I want to say that I tend to agree with the letter that in some of the places where they have scooters operating, yeah, you find scooters lying everywhere. So I actually made a note for myself saying, is this going to be a case where we have, you know, scooters lying around just like we have all these pets, abandoned pets, cats and dogs in the community? So, you know, we have a lot of cats running, you know, because people want to get pets. They want dogs, they want cats. And then they leave them, and they don't take care of them. So how do we make sure that we don't have a situation where these scooters are lying everywhere? Who would be accountable? The student or the owner, the person who is operating this, you know, business?
So the way that this typically would work, these units have GPS trackers in them typically in other cities that I've been into, and they're fairly accurate. So they know if they're in the middle of a street, and they know if they're in the middle of someone's yard. So the company knows this. I can tell you, I've talked with someone from Bird Scooters. The way that they operate is they tend to have a local representative of the company who is in charge of the fleet here in Mount Pleasant. So then that individual does have tracking information available to them for the units. It tells them, you know, this unit's off in a yard, so it's their job to go and get it. If there's a complaint or something like that, our police department, as we said, we would have the information for the actual operating company. We could contact them. We could contact the local representative, tell them, hey, you got to go pick up a scooter on the corner of Mission and Pickard, or wherever it happens to be. If it's not picked up with a certain amount of time, again, we can go, we can impound it, we can grab that. And then if they want that unit back, they're going to have to pay whatever the fee is that we said.
Okay, cool. Yeah, works for me.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to make sure that city staff will not be compelled to do that work, you know? Or Department of Public Safety, you know?
Okay. I will entertain a motion to set the public hearing.
I move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion to set the public hearing for October 10 on the Electric Scooter/Skateboard City Code. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries. We have set the public hearing. Now, I'm going to hand over this time to Vice Mayor Alsager for the recommendation from the Appointments Committee for the City Commission vacancy.
Thank you. Just for a little context, almost a year ago, we had 10 applicants, and we had a little more work to do then. This time, we had four applicants, and we did, we had four real good applicants. We belabored over our decision a bit. One thing that kind of had two candidates kind of rise up to the top is they had applied a year ago. So I took that as a positive. I think we all did. We took it as a positive that they were interested last year, and they were interested again. And of those two candidates, we chose Brian. And we think we can survive with two Bryans on the commission, but this Brian is B-R-Y-A-N.
Ooh, that's a negative.
And his last name is Chapman, C-H-A-P-M-A-N. And I called him, and he accepted that he would accept the appointment.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about Brian?
Yeah, he is the local director for Clothing Inc. That's one of the nonprofits that's in the Strickler Center. And one other thing that made him stand out is he has done so much volunteer work in his past, including leaving Mount Pleasant and going to Japan to help with tsunami, you know, efforts and other efforts in other states as well as locally. So we thought he would be a good candidate.
Okay. All right, so I'm feeling a little outnumbered here, considering the other three that sit on this board at this time are the Appointments Committee. But I believe we just have to have a vote. It's not a roll call, correct?
It's not a roll call, no. You'll need a motion and a second.
A motion and a second.
And then a vote, please.
Okay. So do I... Can we entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Appointments Committee?
I'll move that we appoint Brian Chapman to the open position on the commission.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? All right. Welcome, Mr. Chapman, to the commission.
And I did warn him it was going to be towards the end of the agenda, so I didn't know if he would show up or not.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to move into public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you would like to come forward and present something that you would like the city to hear or the commission to hear at this time, please step forward to the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll be given five minutes. Do we have any emails for comments?
No, we do not.
All right, I do not see anyone coming forward for the public comment, so I will close that at this time. We do not have a closed session or a work session, so at 7:57, I will end our City Commission meeting. Thank you all for coming.